Okay. Oliver, this is whatever twenty day. Uh, I'm creating of the school board. And uh. Six two. See do the roll call of the students here. Want to start?
Yeah, I'm here and have students junior representative and and.
And I'm General Woodjack District Two.
Dave Larson District Five.
Uh, Dr. Patrice, President Superintendent, Department of West District Four.
And we hope that so um, Dr. Hoover is excused. We're hoping that uh. Dr. Simpson will be here shortly. Both of us, uh, couple of this good, but um, okay, so thanks, everybody who's joining us on this evening. Um, we'll start with our. Well, and I said with um.
We have a period of conversation. Shannon said stay engaged with experience discovered and be vulnerable, receive virtue and accept and accept non-tourism. We in the tech was so distinctly acknowledge that the man where we teach collaborate, learn and play as a professional man. But the first people of Seattle, the device and no shit people have been found and honor the gratitude around itself. And the device and no shit has. As we want to school here, we have responsibility for the stewardship of this land and the straight start to work alongside the device and no shit people. Who have been living and working here since time in the world. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that black and brown people were born and die during working this plan that gets their well for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of a number of survivors over the centuries to today. On all the animal maybe including voluntary and volunteering traffic. Doors and undocumented peoples in the building of one of the for two thousand United States. As they spoke of the leadership, we will finish to recognize and work in our systems that historically and currently enforce and create inequities among the people we serve.
Thank you, your presence. My honor, I have to uh. What wish would I put into wish? I would like to give a reply to the state of some America. And to the republic which stands of mission, of uh, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Director Giver channel. How many? Yeah, so yeah, director was now online with us as well. So let's see, it's hard to get down. I guess the next item was. Both of office, so probably end up moving that to hopefully when. Director Simpson shows up, otherwise we'll probably add. So um, can you motion to approve the agenda?
So move second.
Okay, everything. All right. And there's a proof and. And instead of you all, I feel like both of office and Phil. Which time as. Online, Dr. Simpson showed up. Um, so now we have a comment area. Uh, both online and in person. For those. Who may be online, wanted to do a comment, you can just then raise your hand or uh, put a request in the chat and uh, we'll get to. After you do that, um, and first of all, the comments. So first person on the list is Angela Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Angela Meyer and I'm the Office Manager at Cascade Elementary. I'm angry, frustrated and tired of the lack of leadership in central office. I would first like to address some comments made by a director at the November fourteenth Boardwork Session. She said that a kindergartner has been expelled twice. I would like to set the record straight. We have not expelled the kindergartner. To provide context, the director has been contacted about various matters because they have listed themselves as the emergency contact. It's a shame that the director's conference may don't look like we suspend students just just to suspend them. On the contrary, we at Cascade View believe in reteaching, redirecting, de-escalating and implementing restorative practices. To support all of our students to provide an engaging, safe and supportive learning environment. We have directors and executive directors that don't know or care to understand how their programs work. They haven't visited their programs at length to find out how things work, talk to staff to find out how things are going, and worse. Don't care to listen to staff that have years of experience. This isn't about doing things in Tech Willa way, but instead finding out what is working and what isn't through the eyes of the people that are in those programs day in and day out. It's hard to learn how a program runs from the comfort of the district office. We should not have to beg for communication, but yet that's where we are. I keep hearing the word team being used quite frequently by district leadership. Being a small district, we don't have the luxury of having deputy directors and those personnel underneath those directors. Our directors and executive directors are the team. I'm not sure if they don't understand this or if they just don't care, but their lack of leadership and being present is not only exhausting, they inexcuse. As an example, we are currently trying to support a student that has very high needs. The department director has been emailed by multiple staff regarding incidents with this student. We have asked for help. We're summoned from administration to please come over, observe the student and give our staff some support. Have we seen anyone from the district? No. Instead, we are told that they are unavailable in attendance at other meetings and better yet to not include them in the emails. What are we supposed to do when we can't get help from at all from the district leadership? An email from a district admin was sent to all staff and families last week, and in that email, it stated the following. And I quote, ensuring the safety and well-being of our students' families and staff remains paramount to us. In recent events, we have encountered challenges and I am proud of how our district administration promptly responded to address those issues, end quote. Really? Dr. Prinstat has repeatedly asked for help with traffic at CB. They haven't received any? No. Does someone need to get seriously injured for a response from district leader? Dr. Prinstat has steadily advocated, has been steadily advocating for status students, but it seems her communication has fallen on deaf ears. So I'm curious as to what challenges district administration have promptly responded to because it's even, we haven't seen it. It feels as if we are in a rudderless ship, just navigating the best that we can and trying to keep the boat from sinking. People are tired of not being heard by district leadership. People are tired of not being supported by district leadership. People are tired of being talked at instead of talked to by district leadership. We have staff with a lot of experience that are going to leave if there aren't changes. Writing a program based on bullying intimidation doesn't work. What does work is actually listening to and responding to staff that are knowledgeable in how their programs run, what works, what doesn't. And how everyone can work together to make this a district that sees student successes increase year after year. Finally, I want to address a comment made by a director at the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three Board Meeting. Then speaking about the continued board recruitment and I quote, your commitment to ensuring we have a board that is representative of all of our students. That includes our white students, end quote. I've been in this district for seven years and in that time, the board has always represented our white students very well. You say that you are committed to anti-racist work, but that comment speaks otherwise. According to our state report card, our district is twenty-four point one percent Asian, eighteen point eight percent black African American. Thirty-five point five percent Hispanic Latino, four point two percent native Hawaiian, other Pacific Islander. And zero point seven percent American Indian Alaskan native and ten point six percent white. I know that math has changed a lot since I've been in school, but I'm curious how a currently one hundred percent white board does not represent ten point six percent of the white student population. I've heard of boy math and I've heard of girl math, so maybe this is board of directors math? It seems that the fight part has been said out loud and I believe there needs to be accountability given to our community. How many visits have been canceled and not rescheduled? How many emails have not been responded to by district administration? Why the pushback and sensitive and disrespectful tone and comments from district administration? Where is the respect and collegiality that is so prominently written in the T S D Strategic Plan of Equity and Empathy and Relationships? Where is the support for the front office and building administrators? The board of directors are cordially invited and welcome to speak with the CB front office, building administration and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Eastman.
Hi, um, I've never done this before, so I'm kind of. Um, my name is Danielle and I'm a mother. I don't want to cry. I don't, um, mother to a kindergartner at a little elementary school. Um, I belong to the PTA and I. Have been trying to volunteer in her classroom as much as I can and help out around there as much as I possibly can. Um. A major concern that I have is. The cell phone service there is basically non-existent. Um, even when I am on the wifi, I cannot text. I cannot. I can't text my daughter's teacher that I'm in the room with. Um, I cannot text to see how my other children are doing at home. Um. I have been there during a practice lockdown and. In the classroom with my daughter's class and where they would be to do the lockdown to be in the safest place possible. Is across the room from where her landline is in the room for the teacher to be able to say. That they have an injury, that somebody's having asthma attack, that anything is happening. Um, and for the teacher to. Not have a line of connection to basically anybody outside. That she would need the assistance for is really concerning to me. Uh. For me to not be able to contact my daughter's teacher and let them call in the landline, which I know there's been a bunch of problems with and it's shut off while I'm on the phone with her. Um. Um, including the morning after somebody threatened to bring a gun to um, one of the other schools. Um. And I just. I'm not like, even when I'm there trying to do PTA to sell popcorn to, you know, benefit the schools there's. And it was an incident there last week or week before that. There was police running around. At a house connected to the school and no one had any idea what was going on and we're standing there watching police run around with the kids. On outside, the kindergartners are outside. We can see the cops. We can see the kids and. There's no communication. The teachers are running around. Nobody has any idea what's going on and they're doing. The best that they can to get the students inside. Um, but there's no way of like. Letting the staff know or letting anybody know what's going on in any kind of a fashion. Like the principal did the best that she could and reached out and tried to give the information that was necessary. But it just isn't good enough. Um, like I don't feel. Comfortable that the safety of the children, staff, parents, anybody on the campus is really. Existent when there's no line of communication. Other than a landline that might be across the room or the teachers are bringing their kids to specialists. They're in the lunchrooms. They're outside at recess. They're doing all these things. Not connected to their landline, which is their only way to communicate and to find things out that's going on. And they can't trust their cell phones. I can't trust their cell phones. I can't trust that there's communication. And that's a major, major problem. And so I don't understand why that is a problem. Why is that a thing? Why is that something that? I have to deal with and a lot of other people have to deal with when I talk to people about volunteering. And being present, being a part of the Watch Moms Program, doing these things to really help these kids. They have to. Choose between being there or having contact with what their other kids are doing because they can't, you can't have both. Like I have to just trust that my other kids at home are okay because. My mom has them, can't contact me. So you have to really choose and you shouldn't have to choose to volunteer at a school. And to do fundraising and to do these things and to spend your time. Or to have contact to the outside world. And I mean, it's only been a matter of weeks that I've been a part of the district and. I don't feel comfortable with that the safety is really being thought about for everyone involved.
And I have just a couple suggestions for, I don't know anything about. Oh, I'm sorry. Brandon Eastman. I have a daughter also. Same daughter, uh, took a loan and. And uh. You know, I think it's just, there is sort of a feeling that when you're at the school, it's this awesome community. I think we've both been really blown away with. Being there and helping out with these things and stuff, but it does feel so isolating when you're. There and you can't talk to anybody outside of there. And it is a big issue and the safety thing is a problem. I was there doing the popcorn Friday thing. And there is, there are apps that like my work uses that are essentially used as like Amber Alerts for our organization. So if there's something going on at. A different location, our phones go off and say, hey, don't come here because you know, it's flooded, whatever it is. And I think that would have been something that was really useful in this instance with trying to get everybody on the same page from outside during recess and inside and letting all the other teachers know immediately. I think they sent out emails, but teachers are teaching. They're not checking their emails, you know, right at the time. That's one thing, but it doesn't work with no cell reception. And so there's that. So. It could be something just making the wifi stronger and somehow I under. Even for guest wifi, it doesn't enable text messages and um, calling with it. So maybe that's a setting. I don't know. Um. Something else that I know other municipalities have done with some of their parks is. Police cellphone spots for cellphone towers to go up and they get a lot of revenue for that. And I know that might be a good way of potentially um. Helping some with the budget stuff because I don't want, obviously there's budget issues and. That might be sort of two birds with one stone type of situation to maybe look into. Um. Yeah, that's pretty much all I've got as far as.
Yeah, it just makes it hard to want to invest the time and the energy and the effort and want to do everything to like help and. You know, I'm calling to get donations and doing everything I can to help the kids. But like, I don't really feel safe with my daughter being there or even me being there or her being there without me being there because I'm not going to know what's going on if I'm not there. So um. I look forward to hearing back from you guys and. Seeing what can be done to fix this major safety concern.
So I'm gonna suggest, you know, your contribution and then figuring out actually the last two folks that are here. I'll pass. Your contact information. You have your cell phone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then hopefully you can get communication going.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Um, Jeff Baker.
I can say what's saying.
Was I for everything?
I decided.
Okay. Uh, didn't get any online requests? Okay. Um, if we stay on with um. Student representative will report.
Um, so yeah, again, my name is Alex. I'm a community representative at Sparta High Schools. And the primary theme I have to report because I'm not sure everybody knows about is the. Formation of the Students Advisory Board. So basically, Dr. Pedrosa, Dennis and I have initiated a patient over there by you for. For anti-racist action at the police district, the board of compromise of students who have been disobeyed. By by the twelve of Asia, by three twelve, who we brought this year to share their ideas with um. The interstudent student superintendent, Dr. Pedrosa and other school leaders. And also these meetings might be facilitated by Dennis and I, but that's not. And yeah, some more information about this on the Students Advisory Board aims to understand and meet the students' fine solution. And and implement new ideas and collaboration with uh, of us here. And yeah, about the application, it's like a little overview of the board. We're seeking applications for school year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four this school year. The form. From students who believe in values of anti-racist action, the application deadline is December forty and if. Yeah, Mr. Let's watch if you've got any questions, email Deborah or. And yeah, that's.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Um.
Yeah. Just give me a segue. Um, anyways, I want to give you a happy, quick, happy Thanksgiving break. I also know um, that is also challenging. Now some stress stressful times for folks as well, and I want personally to thank all the community members. And staff and good staff for our families at the center. Um, this last month, I had the privilege of visiting the Stillwater um, staff. And the board members are headed them to talk about the history of Stillwater in. The district and the work that they've done in previous years and what they're trying to think about in terms of next year. Uh, this is the last year that is their funding runs out for support Stillwater. So this is. Something that they're talking about.
Kind of similar.
Yeah, Stillwater is a group that actually supports food for families that are dealing with food instability. Uh, and so they provide direct food to our students in pre-K to eighth grade in all three of our elementary schools and. They do it with a lot of volunteers who actually come out and help package the food and then they make sure on Wednesdays that they deliver the food to the schools directly. Uh, in the hands of students to take home so that they have that. And so they've been really busy, of course, thinking about. The holidays and the breaks and all of that. So um, I got to see the operation firsthand. Um, and it was, it was, it was pretty awesome. I also visited your first side. So I went to River, Riverton, I'm sorry, Riverton, uh, to thank Director Bullerjack for doing that. I've got a tour. Of everything and it was, I got to see the action in the morning with the kids walking to school and uh, that was um, very, uh, very informative and I learned a lot and. Got to meet all the wonderful volunteers there as well. Uh, no, I put some of them in that morning shift. Um. And then also just want to finally thank the Northstrom for their partnership with Operation Warm uh, at Thorne. Where they provided some support for our families. Um, I've just wanted to note that we were at the Directors Conference uh, last week, the Washington State Directors Conference. I was there with Alex and uh, Director. Brewster and Director Nguyen and some of the board members here and I got to be a participant and Director Larson, which he'll give an update later. And Director Ryan's uh, uh, presentation focusing on equity and funding, uh, and equity funding actually and really gave a wonderful presentation. Just shares from my way and that's coming up. So it's in the newsletter. We're just a monthly newsletter to families and staff. And also on the website, but I just want to share out for everybody on Tuesday, December fifth, uh, we're going to be um. Doing a written cutting for our new partnership with the City of Techwilla, uh, regarding our LTE network, um, having a bit of wifi expansion. Um, this is focused more specifically on families who actually do not have any wifi access at all. Um, December seventh through the ninth, Foster High School is having the production of a Boston machine. Tickets are available, so you know that. And uh, this is Friday, September eighth, Foster High School is in school for tonight. And then Saturday, December ninth, Cascade View Elementary will be hosting their holiday craft market, which is open. To folks and then all, like I said, all these events are on the website and newsletters. Uh, just our recent equity update, uh, November thirteenth. Uh, we had our training for um, the central office and school leaders uh, with Dr. Rogers R. And we discussed how to make our goals or equity goals actionable. And what does it actually look like to make an action plan um, related to the goals and how we create strategies on those goals? Uh, we plan to do more of that within December and then we have a joint meeting with the school leaders and the equity team leads in January, as well as the board training in January. Um, a health update. Uh, this is just really a quick note. We have um. COVID numbers are not coming in as high as they have in the past. They're coming in low, but um, there's a belief that that's due to lack of testing and and reporting. Um, there is a increase, a slight increase in non-COVID respiratory illnesses uh, since September, uh, but not too high, uh, but it's, it's, it's higher than we've experienced. And maybe attributed to the cold and flu season. Um, and the district has received our sun for Narcan and Mira Vina, the Pins as well. Um, just a reminder also to families that from December, uh, we are going to be hosting, um, on December thirteenth, a Wednesday, um, the Vaccination Clinic at Cascade View. And that's my update. There's a lot that, there's a lot.
Um, thank you. I just, I just want to mention both, both Stillwater, who've been fortunate, both Stillwater there and the resident method of church have been in our community doing this work for many years. So. Um, we appreciate all this work they're providing for our students and students. Um, okay, so the finished report. Director, Director Norman.
I was able to interview you for a short time today, which is interesting. And I also work with a couple of children in one of the classrooms. And then I've been volunteering at Temple Elementary where there's no phone, so. Um, I'm sorry to say that that's, I stopped by, sure, but there's a lot of things, but we need to get out there more.
Um, see, Director Hoover, are you?
Yeah.
Sure, I can offer a brief report. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so I had the opportunity along with um, Director Larson, uh, Superintendent Pedrosa and then our um. Uh, student representatives Brewster and when attending the Waza Conference. Um, it was amazing uh, to be able to network um, and uh, just per um, um. You know, do a great amount of learning, really thinking about um, ways that we can support um, uh, the district work um, as as board members. So. Um, that was a great opportunity. Um, at the beginning of this, or rather, at the end of October, I had the opportunity to um, sit uh, on a leadership panel, um, representing. Taquilla for um, a potential Great Gates Grant opportunity, um, which was a really rewarding experience and we also got to meet a few folks from other districts. Um, where I'm excited about um, the possibility of uh, what um, some cohesive work cohesive work um, across our districts could really look like. Um, so I'm really excited to um. Regardless of the outcome of that grant, see that the work that might take place there. Um, and then lastly, uh, the Safety and Inclusion Task Force that has been uh, uh. Engaging in their work since last November is wrapping up. Um, and so we'll be um, uh, receiving that report from them uh, in the next few days. Um, so I'm really excited. We'll also be having uh, the chair um, attend our uh, work session, uh, hopefully in December. Uh, to be able to kind of talk us through uh, their findings and a few other recommendations that they have. So I'm really excited um, about kind of the outcome of that. And I had the opportunity to meet with her today and see kind of a first draft of that report. Um, so I'm excited about the rest of the board seeing that. Um, so that's what I've got. Thank you.
Very well.
Yeah, um, I continue to work with the students that are living on the Riverton Park Campus. Um, they continue to come. We have about four hundred people, a hundred of them are kids living there right now. Um, these are all McKinney Vento kids that are, uh, their families are seeking asylum. So they've been through a lot of trauma. And it's cold outside. And when you said something about the holiday weekend, I'm thinking, oh, yeah, there was one, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Um, when you're in a kind of stressful situation, the holidays go by without notice. Um. But uh, I, I have been uh. Um, really pleased with how our schools have welcomed these kids and was caught off guard today when I took students to Cascade View. Only to realize, oh, they're not supposed to come here anymore. They're supposed to go to therapy. Um, and I will miss working. Um, and I will miss working with Cascade View because they've done such a good job of welcoming our kids in. And I'm sure someone might would do that, too. Um, we are um. Uh. Presenting some challenges with these students in that they're now being placed in different uh hotels in the area. So uh some of them will be moving to the Doubletree in Sea-Tac. And um some are right here at the Econ Lodge, which makes it pretty easy, but. I know that makes a challenge for transportation, which is already stressed and. Um, so whatever we can do to support that, make sure the kids get to school. We will do. Um, because I think our schools are are the one stable thing. Um, that they can count on in their lives and they so much look forward to being with their classmates and their teachers. And uh I think that's all of that.
Um. The. This is for you on a yeah pop up. I'm gonna start with just a couple of um. Things that will probably up bring back uh in December and. Uh. Okay, let's start, yeah, I'm gonna start that. So. Uh, one of the processes. This was the school directors association is um. Established our kind of top ten priorities for the year and. We submitted ours um a while ago and I just wanted to report back. You know, what the what ours said or which are those indexes versus. What they ended up with the, you know, a lot of that, the whole statewide. So. We have some some pretty good uh correlation to the ones that we thought were um. Were uh important generally uh were important to the state as well. So. Um, this is just for your information to see where where things where things ended up. And the one actually that I, you know, we I'm we talked about um. At some point was attracting recruiting and retaining your school board members, which is on the list that was happened. The 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 state as a whole, nobody voted for that one. Um, so. Anyway, next year, I'm kind of probably put that one on the list for us, though, at least it'll start to get on the list and all. Because there are some things. The biggest thing this state legislature could do would be to, right now, to be on the school board, you have to be a citizen of the country and. Uh, there's a movement to um allow permanent residents to be on uh the school board as well. So that's something that would have to come out of those. Um, the second item, um, which again I'll probably bring back in uh December, once we have. The the new board in place is other uh legislative priorities for the um. Twenty-four school year and they're basic or twenty-four legislative session, which um basically keep them the same. The funding one is the top one. Um, I did add one about full funding of substitutes and parents and utilities because that's hitting us pretty hard. Um, and we're not the only one that's hitting hard, but there's that one uh put that one on the list, but. And I've been making our legislators aware of that, so hopefully there'll be some movement on that one. And then also the other one I had was support for the rest of my school board, so allowing permanent residents, the one I just talked about, so. Um, I'll bring that one back in December and we can go over it to see if there's any um ideas about. Uh, any thoughts or expectations just needed on that one? Um. The. Um. The next big thing, so the legislature is going to start their session at the beginning of um January. And this is what they call a short session, so it'll be two months, January, February. And in the middle of it, uh we will, uh, or the School Directors Association also will be having. What is called Day on the Hill, which is going to be January twenty eighth, which is a Sunday, and January twenty ninth, which is a Monday. Today on the hill is the twenty ninth, which is Monday. Uh, we typically will schedule uh meetings with 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 our legislators to go visit them and talk about their priorities that we had, so they're aware of them. And um this year it's going to be done a little differently. Um, because they're going to set up meetings with um. Basically, the E legislative committees that actually oversee education and funding. Um, as opposed to kind of a shot we have approached to go visit everybody. Uh, kind of spend more time talking to people that actually have the power and can do something about it. Which will be good, but um we can set up meetings with our legislators and I don't know. Alex, if you're interested in going on down on that day, it's a Monday, the twenty nine, you know, it's coming right now, but you can think about it if you and or. Um, yeah, the Stan is on my down with you last year at this time, so. Um, if you're interested, I can I can set up meetings with our legislators, where it's in Acme and Kirkless and um Senator Hasadawa. And we can talk about and actually to represent if any of you or any of your folks don't want to come down as well, you can keep that in mind. Um, the twenty eighth is a Sunday, that's kind of a a formalized event that you have to sign up for and register. Um, since I'm on the legislative committee, I get registered for free, but uh so. You know, that's another thing to consider, but I just goes after this. We can talk about it in December, you know, if we want to go and if you guys can think about it as well. Um, it typically involves, if you're down on it, like it involves a full day, kind of drive down and then come back, so. You can think about that. Pardon me?
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's me. Um. Yeah, so um. I said the Washington annual convention or annual conference this year and um we did one presented um. Dennis uh Nguyen, our senior representative myself and. David Knight is a um professor at the University of Washington, presented a a session on um. The funding system and how it's inequitable and how it's regressive in the sense that it funds. School districts with um lower poverty rates and higher rates than at higher rates than districts larger than pipe areas. And so. It's been something I've been working on for several years and. The purpose of this was to um, it was it was very well attended, there was I think about at least eight people in the building. Purpose of this was to kind of get get uh increased awareness of this because. Uh, I've been working with our legislators on it, but in order to get things through the legislature, particularly things about related to the funding system. Requires a lot of um alliance building and and getting enough people together to. Uh, actually uh move that legislation legislation along. Had a couple of meetings that have been very promising, one with Representative David Acme from the local district, who is very interested in the subject. And I also met with um Senator Nobles from the Tacoma area, who's the Vice Chair of Education in the Senate, and she's interested in this as well. And they said she's gonna uh looking at presenting some bills to increase. Um, the funding that comes to us from what is called the Learning Assistance Program, which is based on the fifteen hundred some trade. So. Um, anyway, it's happy. We got a lot of positive feedback from that and um. I'm also going to be meeting um later this week with. Um, somebody who's on the editorial board of the Seattle Times. And they are also interested in this, so there will be some articles coming around. Which is always a always a big thing. It raises more areas and uh legislators looking at it. So hopefully. Uh, we'll have some uh progress on this um on this area. I did attend a couple of other sessions um at the conference, which um. One of them was um. Related to um. Interesting, um, this is called a PLC Institute. It's, there's a presentation by a consultant and. The 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 it's about Whiter School District and West Valley School District. Um, and it was about, uh, and they were using kind of high ready data to drive. Drive their academic outcomes and. There is a variety of things there, but one of the things that they that they do, which um would be interesting for us to consider is. Having board visits to schools to see the different instructional strategies in action. Which um I think would really be a good idea, whether it's, I mean, we've got a COTE team, we've got a variety of things. Going on in our schools, but um actually, um, you know, this is not for evaluation purposes. This is for education purposes for the board, so that we actually see, you know, the different, the different things that are going on in schools, so. Um, I thought that was a really good approach. Um, and. Okay. Um. Yeah, so that's my report. Um. Let's see. So I need, I want you to prove the consent of this.
So. Sorry.
We approved the consent agenda, and you say I. Hi, any opposed? None opposed, that consent agenda has improved. Um. Social media litigation. Um, what is this?
Um, so I'm so sorry, but um I have no new information about that at this time.
Okay.
I think she said.
Oh, no. Oh, okay. Uh, so for those of you watching, when we're, the district is considering whether there's several numerous school districts that are um. Getting together in fact, actually, also to sue the social media companies, the internet, Facebook and um. Um, does it just Facebook or is it?
It's all the it's the net of Facebook, so. I swear on social media, yeah.
Um, and so we're um considering whether we would want to go in on that um. Uh, as part of the class. Um, do we have any? I think the last we read that was. Um, the superintendent was here at that first step, and we're. Seem to be generally in favor of it or just looking for your recommendation as to, I mean, basically whether it involves, you know, the trade-offs between involving any stat line. Versus the potential reward and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so my recommend, so I would recommend that we pursue it.
Okay.
Um, based on uh all the folks I've talked to, I've actually asked Judge Sam Diaz Lee. Uh, to talk to other small districts um to give us information, um especially from past collaborative. Uh, there has been a benefit. I think the um, there's a lot of research, keep in mind. Um, that there's actually research nearly from uh a lot of universities who've done a deep dive into that and it's actually. Is one of the reasons why um the school boards are jumping on board with this because um there is probably going to be a benefit and um. And the money would be used to support them to help and and student them to help, which is what we always need. And so. Um, I I would recommend that we consider um pursuing this. It's just a matter of us deciding on which um. Uh, group to join and which attorney to join. And then there's uh we have to file paperwork, but then after that, no, and there's no cost to the district at all. Uh, at all. So if we lose, we don't get anything. If we win. Uh, with this group, then we need some money that would be used for um mental health. So it's, there's no cost to us at all. But I think it would be a good thing to work.
Okay.
If there's a benefit for us, for the students for sure.
Okay, I'll maybe next time if we could bring that. So again, the attorneys, we did talk about that, but they're they're doing it entirely on contingency basis. And only get something if if we win. The other thing, um. The benefit, these are cross-section losses, it always takes multiple years, so this is not a immediate feedback, but it's down the line, it could be a um.
So I'll bring something.
Okay, okay. Um. Let's see, questions on any presentations, um. Any questions on the enrollment report? So. We did see. Some significant increases in. I built a cascade view and foster. This year. For this this month, I should say. And I cover. Um.
But the significance of each of the numbers I'm reading for and. That we put it here.
No, I I thought I had heard at the last meeting that Cascade View was at like hundred, but. It's not, it's only. It's what reported, which is which is correct.
We double check our numbers based on the last scoreboard meeting um. Report or um public comments, so we double check our numbers and our numbers. Here that are recorded on this paper are confirmed.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
And actually, the largest increase in student numbers is at Foster High School.
Yes.
Forty. So.
Yeah.
We had an. And with Food I can have another mine, but we had three and we'll get minus nine. So anyway, the net result is, you know, an increase of um. About seventy or eighty, which is pretty significant. Although, as as mentioned. There's some calories.
There were some of those. Foster students. Some are and some there as well, so. And but we had something that you can add as well, which is why we had to pause for a while. We received a lot of students and then we had to say, okay. We have to stop it now.
For those who may want to be able to. There, I know undergoing a major remodel, so the the with high school foot there is not in very good state, and so. Some people have decided that they graduated from this here at Foster, so they may, they may not go back and tell you numbers like that. That's what the others. Um, okay.
But I can I share something that's really interesting. I was at Foster High School uh last week. Um, and I went to uh one of their library events and we have a student there that actually came from a credit school. And I asked them, so are you enjoying the school? Are you liking it? And he said, I love it here. He said, I feel like I can see your focus and. I feel really welcomed here. And um, yeah, I'm really enjoying it here. So that was great. I just have to share that. That's great. I think that's uh part of the work that we have.
Yeah. Um. Okay, monthly, let's see. The monthly budget status report. Um. Okay, this one. Is gonna kind of be related to um. I don't even know what we're gonna be talking about. I was trying to figure out kind of what are. What our actual status is. The fact that in this October report. There was zero um revenue coming in. Which is not true. You. I mean, I I'm so curious, why did? Why, I mean, yeah, so for those who don't know, you know, the revenue from the district comes from tax receipts from. You know, the the property uh and tax receipt, taxes, there's property taxes in Centipi County, and then they distribute them to us and. And typically, the reason October is such a good month is that's when the first half of the property taxes are due, so everybody. Puts a big amount of money, money closest to school districts has money to receive. So so we get a big infusion of money in in October and then in in April, which is the uh other deadline for the property tax. So. I'm here, I mean, almost every other month, we we see significant revenue coming in in October, so I'm a little um. You know, I mean, this this chart here showing the downturn is not really true.
Uh. Time timing issue, uh we want to stretch for your point.
Right, can you can you come up to this and blow the mic so that people can hear you?
Yeah. To to your to your point, uh. There there was a timing issue. Uh. We should have had about two point seven million dollars that we reported in November.
Right.
To the looking at uh the graphs that you are, for everybody else that's on page four. We should have seen a little bit of an uptick because of the higher than average. Uh, local leveling collections.
And so is that, is that King County just not? Getting it to us on time or?
I don't know if if they didn't give it to us on time or. With our local procedures here, trying to catch up with everything that happened with the year end.
Okay.
That uh it could have been a combination.
I just want to say that this, so this. This October report is not really an accurate reflection of where we really are, because, you know, we do have that extra. Two point seven million dollars. And this can come up, you know, later with this resolution about going out and borrowing some money. This is not really an accurate reflection of our current financials.
It isn't, but uh. Uh, if if we were.
It would be that same bump we see in every other year.
Yeah, it would be. There's something somewhere around in here.
So, well, you know, it it, I mean, one percent is about six hundred thousand, so two percent is about one point two million, so it's, it'd be higher than that, could be.
Yeah, yeah, still still better than than a gray area.
Yeah, but it's, and it this this comes up when we get to the other session about how much we should be borrowing against the other funds, but um. And I guess, yeah, I was just looking through the general fund. And I guess, yeah, I was just looking through the general fund. You say is sitting at minus three point two, which, but that doesn't include the. The eight hundred thousand outstanding loan that already went into the sub actually worse than the three point two.
Oh, correct, uh. Add a negative eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so that puts it at about negative four million. And then, but then. It's kind of offset by the fact that we really have. It would have been more in general funds, so it's really a one point three million dollar, I'm just trying to get, get a lot of just accurate reflection of. What's going on, the other uh question which. I class now, um, is. So your, the proposal is you want to borrow. Up to four million from the capital projects fund. Um. And. So the capital projects fund currently has, let's see by my, yeah, six. Six million, but then is eight hundred thousand, and we already borrowed from that in there.
You would add eight hundred thousand, especially we've already borrowed.
Okay, yes.
Basically.
And the eight hundred thousand is due to be repaid in February.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um. So now the capital projects fund includes um two things currently, maintenance and the technology.
Correct, and we refer to that locally for the, that's the tech level.
Yeah, it's, it was money for technology and also for maintenance of the buildings and so forth. So the question is, if, if we borrow. A big chunk of money out of there. Uh, that's not going to be paid back for a year. Who, or what are we? Are we just adding to our deferred maintenance list, or are we sure, sure, are we going to be able to fund our technology plan?
We'll, we'll be able to uh take care of the technology plan. But that, that is a priority. Uh, reason we have deferred maintenance is. Because it's something we can. Kick down the road a little bit. And those are the items that, that uh, uh, two points out that uh will continue to move forward. And then on December twelfth, when we all meet. Uh, in this room. We'll give an update on the deferred maintenance.
Yeah, I guess I, I'd like to see what, what is, so by borrowing this, what I mean, what are we deferring essentially by borrowing this big? Ten, my, my, my question is, I'm not yet convinced that four million is the right number. Um, because. Um. Well, first of all, first, we got a two million and then about that, the four million.
Yeah.
So that makes me a little, I'm not. Particularly when I look at this chart and try and push that out through the year. I, I'm not comfortable with, with four million is the right number and the more you borrow, first of all, the more you borrow. It makes it generally worse because you have to pay interest.
Right.
And number two, there's more deferred maintenance and then what is the deferred maintenance, you know, that we're deferring? Do we really need to defer all of it?
And, and that, that's the, the, the language of, of up to.
Yeah, no, I get, yeah, I get up to.
And, and, and uh our preference would be. Up to a little bit. And then up to a little bit more. Uh, what was playing is uh. And, and Justin uh. Uh, Len can be, be, is the uh E S D representative. Is helping us through. Or is assigned to help us.
I guess, so have we, have we gone into binding conditions?
It, it's kind of technical, now we provide purposes, yeah, yes. I don't think that we have received the formal notification.
Okay.
Uh, but.
We're not, we're not getting directives from. O S B I or anybody.
No, and, and uh. I don't think that we will get sort of correctives that you have to give us.
Okay.
We're getting support.
Okay.
And we have been trying uh Justin Lanning.
Okay.
And. He and I have actually been working. Uh, close. Uh, uh, at least once a week face to face. Uh, since I, 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 I came back. Uh, a week uh after Veronica left. I started meeting with Justin. Uh, Justin came up with, with the number I independently came up with the same number as a, a budget. Cool, but this kind of looking at, looking at this is probably the easiest. Way to. Explain it, and what this is for everybody. Is our funding balance. Month over month, year over year. But if we go back. Here. And we, we generally use the obvious number as our ending funding balance. So if we go from here to here. We drop two point two million dollars. And then. Nothing really happened then, in addition, spending actually accelerated. So again, two point two million dollars here. And this, this was. Three point nine million dollars. And that includes the eight hundred thousand dollar loan that's now included in this, that, that up in February of this year. Going to go from this point on, August number should. Could. Could be five thousand, so three point nine million dollars here. Nothing, and, and again, uh, the majority of our cost, cost structure is. Done once a year. In the spring before the year, to back spring. Yeah, we did not make any changes. To our head, um. For all practical purposes. And throughout the summer. Contracts. Were written on an annual basis. Which kind of walk the scent, it's hard, it's hard to do things during the year. So if we save this. Three point nine million dollars. Is another three point nine million dollars. We get down to a negative ending fund balance of around four point nine million. And upsetting that is everything that everybody in this room and everybody that. That decided. Uh, is associated with us. What can we do today to reduce that? But that's kind of how we came on the. Four million to get the four million. I'm thinking it's likely that most of the major changes. That we may come back and we even more. But we kind of hit the level on, on the, how much we can borrow from the debt level. And that's why we were considering a lower only first. And then coming back again.
And I guess the counter uh veiling trend is. Is that we're getting more students. Which is going to be more revenue, this is based on the budgets of a. Of a lower revenue or a lower student count than we actually have at the moment.
Yes, look, look, looking at this chart and, and uh, so uh, just, Justin and I. Did some calculations with additional student revenue. As, as well, that, 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 that is helpful.
So I guess, yeah, I still like to, um, so. The concept is to keep the tech plan funded and call the money out of the maintenance.
Not, not, not being able to address the, the, the deferred maintenance as originally.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know, I don't know if we can. Do this on next time, but, because I'd like to hear what the deferred maintenance. You know, what, what you're planning to defer, because we had, I remember in the last deferred maintenance, we saw, you know, a bunch of safety issues on there, I would be. Concerned if there, if we're deferring some safety issues. Um, so. I don't know, is this, well, yeah, that, I guess that's more of the discussion for when we get to the, to the resolution about um with four million. Um, I was trying to kind of explore that now, so I understand. You know, where are these things are coming from?
And, and uh. Uh, fo- fully agree and understand.
Okay. Um. Okay. Neither. Questions about the. The budgets, then we'll move on to. Thanks, uh, new teacher academy. Yeah, questions on the G bang on? Oh.
Yeah. Please have any.
Okay, yeah. Not seeing any questions, so. Okay. Um, highly capable program. Here's the question, um.
Uh, that is, if it's a data question, it's me, if it's a. Theory, no regard for a question.
The question I have about um. The disproportionality that we see. But I was trying to, I was trying to get a, because I don't see it in. You know, the data that presented is um. The current situation.
Yes.
And this is one where I think, I think we need trends, trends, because we need to say. Um, you know, are we doing better, are we doing worse?
Yeah.
You know, so that's what I was looking for when I was asking for a, for a, a chart which. Um, shows the trend over time was, you know, you can easily translate this portionality into the number, you know. One, particularly proportional, that's a nine is under represented, over represented. And just uh pick that for each raise over the last, you know, five or six years, so we can see. Are we getting better?
Right.
Are we getting worse?
Right.
That's what I was looking at, so you, you just kind of gave me the same chart again.
Well, those are three different years. And so i- if you look at them, they're pretty consistent in terms of uh.
Oh, SMS honors.
Yeah.
SMS, oh, I didn't, there's no label on what year it is.
Oh, not at the top there?
Okay, so this was, okay, so this is the show alter. Okay.
And you can see that goes, they look fairly similar over the course of the three years. In terms of uh percentage of population of race versus.
Yeah, I guess this, for me, this, this, the proportion, I, it's easier to see if it translates into a number between, you know, zero and. So we're rather than trying to figure out what, what the relationship is and then this, so this is for. This is for show off, or again, there's also the other ones as well, so. Yeah, I just, I mean, it'd be really helpful to see the, the trend, so what you're saying is. The trends are basically the same.
Yeah. I guess that's exactly.
Okay, so then, then the question goes back to, yeah, teaching and learning to say.
Yeah.
You know, okay, so what is this, why is it, and why are we? Why are we not? Uh, moving that, because we tried different strategies and it doesn't, okay. That was my question in that one. Um. Yeah, so if we could get the kind of, I think that would be really helpful, right? Um.
We are going to be doing a highly capable presentation, work session in January.
Okay.
So uh Jeff, you can just make a note on that so that we can make sure that Alison writes her.
Yeah.
Highly capable presentation, we're in the trend area with specific numbers, that would be helpful.
Perfect. Or agree or commentary, middle and high.
She's pretty focusing on that highly capable program, but I think that would be helpful if we can just get that data in that presentation.
Sure.
Yeah, it'd be good for both the, the honors and the A P programs and the middle, middle of high school as well, because.
Yeah.
Sometimes those over the years, you've seen those, those change, the times there, we don't have big gaps and then sometimes we do. So to see what. You know, what's happening, if, if the gaps close, okay, what happened that year, and then if they wind up again, okay, they'll have it that year. That kind of stuff, I'm ready.
And Scott, you could note that too, so Jimmy is uh working with Alison on that, that'd be great, don't you know?
Don't we still have some issues with? How we really are. Going to progress? Um. With our, uh, I mean, there's a difference in. Black African American than black African.
Yeah, we should have a, we should have a example.
Yeah, and, and so we don't capture that either, and that would be, we don't have a way of doing that yet, but we need to figure that out, okay, we think.
Yeah, that's how, it gets back to the registration forms in terms of if. I know some, I've taken studies from the state board that actually goes to the level of what country, you know, the, come from, so.
And we thought of that region.
Yeah, yeah. All that.
So maybe we can look at that, but then we have to change the forms, so.
Yeah.
And the Muslim schools struggling with the same issue at that specific school, so, yeah. Right.
Um. Okay, gifted in advance, of course, sir. Any questions? I don't know. Um. Maybe social emotional mental health students? Is that the answer? Okay, that's it. On it, so our student representatives. Then someone did a. Um, a study or a survey a while ago, came up with some recommendations, so this is basically saying we're gonna. Uh, look at those and. Okay, went here to twenty twenty four. Yeah, a lot of that. Was about students not necessarily being aware of all the, all the resources that they have and how do you. How do you do that, so that's a big one for our. Student advisor.
That's one of the ones who wants to do the things we're gonna help us figure out, what does that look like?
Right, how you can take that so that students understand all the resources that are available to them to take that some. Mental health concerns. Um. Okay, graduation rates. So we have. Yeah, the similar gaps that we've always had, unfortunately. Um, although. I, I will say I'm gonna show probably in. January some. Uh, I, I track these gaps, the, the, the ratio gaps in, in graduation in the district for years and. You'll see that our, our race on um graduation rates is crossing, we have divisional, always this, always this. Um, although I was saying the last couple of years. We're starting to see the trend go back to quite many students graduating at higher rates than, you know, a lot of Latino students, so. I, you know, we might need to wonder, query why that is, because there have been years. I mean, people raised, that raised a good, like about like ten years, there's, there's years when, back to that highest graduation rate, sometimes less, they have a higher graduation rate. So they're all over the, all over the board, so.
Well, I find it, I just, we'll, we'll look at the, somebody can talk about the high expectations for all our work session. Um, because when we look, we just had the report recently where Latino students have early. Performing at a lower level.
Yeah.
And they have the highest referral.
Yeah.
In special education and low, so it's all correlated, right, so. I think that's something that we just have to continue to unpack.
Yeah.
Um, and then look at that and see if that same trend is happening for the Pacific Islanders as well.
Right.
And then what is, and what does all that mean in terms of what we're doing to support our students?
Right, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and then. The S A T, A C T, um. Yeah, it's, that's, the thing about the S A T is, is the same um situation, is, is the same um, that's back, it's. Highly correlated, highly correlated in those, unfortunately, and so, uh, but our job is, and. Unfortunately, and so, uh, but our job is, and it's interesting, if it wasn't, and we. Uh, Chris Ray, that was the superintendent of instruction, just some questions, and. And one of the questions was related to the achievement gaps, and his answer was, I found. Unsatisfying, he was trying to say, well, that, he tried to put that back on school districts completely, and school districts. Yes, we need to look at it, and yes, we need to do work on it, but um, I maintain that the state needs to take some responsibility for that as well, particularly. Uh, with regard to the funding system, so um. I'm not been happy with that answer, you know, and that's, but anyway. Um, we will take a look at that and see what we can do, right? LP survey. For that one. So my understanding, I thought this, so what we have here is a kind of a. An overview of some of the data, am I right?
Yes.
Um, so this isn't, because there's some questions in here, I know that have been in there for years, and I'm interested to see the answers to, but they aren't in the. This particular set, I don't know who produced this particular fact sheet.
They, they actually do. Um, there's no identifiers in this data whatsoever, and so that's why, that's why they they pick it, I believe. The actual report is like a hundred and forty eight pages.
Yeah.
It's like the one that I can, the confidential one that I can pull out of the portal, is a hundred and forty eight pages.
I'm interested in this, for all of the questions at the district and building levels, not at the student level, but at the district and building level.
I'd have to go back and look at that.
Which I understand is is reading, I guess, FBI is kind of taking over this, you can, apparently you can get at that data through the EDS system.
Um, I actually go to the actual port, I pulled this out of the actual portal, I helped you survey portal. Um, I believe it is in EDS, yeah, I've never pulled it from there though, but I can go in and take a peek.
And you can just get, um, yeah, district level and building level. Uh, there was, because like I said, there's questions, one of the questions that I've said most for years is the question of. You know, you're asking the students to see yourself on the curriculum.
Okay.
Which I think is a really uh important question, we also, I think, asked the form of that on the CDE.
Yeah.
Uh, data as well, but, you know, that's to me an important part of, well. One part of why we potentially, why I have some of these new stats. That's there, okay, yeah, so, I like to see that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, um, policy number twenty four, any motion, any tension? Let's see, is there a question? I don't know, any additional questions on that? Okay, so that one, you come back to us.
Next one.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Oh, okay. So, if, if you have any questions, just kind of, as we go through. Oh, um.
I wonder if you can do it, or he um, can turn on his camera and put up his hand, and so he can do that.
Can you turn on your camera, Representative?
I'm trying to figure that out to do that. I got to unmute, it's kind of as far as we got.
Although I do have enough authority because, uh, because my, posted it on, um, one of my Facebook pages. Somebody said, you didn't raise your hand in the front of my room, so actually, it's okay.
You got me there? Perfect.
Okay, so why don't we, yeah, why don't we do the? Oh, the office there.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, really, so why don't we, before we do the action items, why don't we do that? Yeah, so. Representative Simpson and Representative Morris, take it away.
Okay, Charlie, I need you to speak after me.
Hi, Charlie Simpson, and I'm, it's hard to hear, but have.
Having been duly appointed to the office of school board director.
Have been duly appointed to this office of school board director.
Do solemnly swear.
Does hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will definitely support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the director of the school district.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Taquilla School District.
Number four oh six.
Number four oh six.
In county, state of Washington.
In county, state of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability. Now, you don't have to look at me anymore.
Okay, you're officially sworn in, um, and. Let's see, go on to the action items. Who approved resolution nine thirty eight, uh, okay, so I need a motion?
Second.
Then moved in second, and that we approve resolution nine thirty eight, renewal of educational programs in operation W's. Um, any, any other discussion on this one? Um, I actually have a question, so this is assuming. You said two percent student growth over the four years. Um. My question, you know, so far this year, we've seen six percent in one year. Um, obviously, we're probably not going to see that, I concern, the concern here is if we, if we. Lower all the amount. You know, that we typically, and then, we're constrained by the numbers of students we have. Um, that the state allows, or, but we don't, we don't want to get in a situation for two years, and you can ask where. We ask the voters for a tax amount of dollars, and that dollar, and then the student growth. Kind of exceed ten dollar amount in the middle of the year, that isn't going to be absolutely shared, and we don't get stuck in that, because. You couldn't recover from that, I think.
Yeah, the, uh. We currently, and and the, 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 the amount of money that we're asking the voters is building on. What we currently have a request from the board, from from the voters, that number is higher.
Right.
Than than what we are tapped at.
Right.
So, so building up in that high number.
Okay.
It gives us room between a half million and a billion dollars a year going forward.
Okay, okay. Yeah, they have, okay, three point five average inflation, um. Because the state is, they're not going to get pursued, it's tied to inflation, so because of IPD, so. Um, like, two point five is probably a reasonable number in the long term. Over a four year period, yeah, I mean. Last couple of years been higher, but since, I mean, okay, okay, um. That's not good, any other questions? Okay. Paul, can you say hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Got here, anything online?
Sorry.
Did, did, did we go on?
Yeah, sorry, there we go, I'm, I'm still good trying to figure out these buttons, yes, aye.
Okay. And directly respond, okay, okay, so to you now, is, um, approved, uh, resolution nine thirty eight. Uh, you know, as approved resolution nine thirty nine, renewal of technology and capital project, I think. Think somebody can make a motion. Okay, so moving aside, we approve, uh, renewal of technology and capital projects every time.
Just, just a note.
Yeah.
When the titles come up, they say to homeless schools.
Oh, yeah.
Video thing, we fixed that three times.
Okay. Yeah, we're not doing the work. Okay. Uh, that's, that's, okay. Any other discussion, okay, Paul, can you tap?
Oh.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, so that's approved unanimously, uh, so those will be going forward to the ballot in February. Um. You wish to approve resolution nine forty interrupt fund loan?
So. Second.
And moved in second, is, uh, we approve resolution nine forty interrupt fund loan, I guess the one other. Question I did have, and should I go, is, you know, why are we borrowing the capital projects coming as opposed to the? The debt service, I'm pretty simple.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good.
Because we, we do have, what, two, two million something in the, in the debt service, on which. Is left over from the, uh, bond project of two thousand sixteen, which, at this point, we might have, we have a priority of the sort of renovation of the. Of the performing arts center, um.
The, uh. I, 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 I asked the same question, I, I asked the same question, because I was worried that. If we're not able to improve our general, and we run out of money from capital to borrow, um. Do we have another option? And the option is. You don't want to go there. Technically, theoretically, it is possible. But it's filled with hoops, it's filled with red tape, it's filled with a lot of other things. That we want to avoid, and that was the answer coming back, uh, to me, so, so the answer is, yes, we can. Uh, the advice is. Not, not, not if we absolutely have to.
Probably, because it's tied up with, with bonds, with our legal obligations to pay the bondholders, and so.
With, 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 yeah, the investors, with.
Right.
Insurance companies that, that, uh, that bought these bonds. And, and, and it's, it's just something that. If we don't absolutely have to, uh, we shouldn't.
Is there a problem with, um. Waiting on this one and for another month, the reason I say that is, because I'd really like to see what these deferred. What we're deferring with the four million.
Yeah, and.
And if you say up to four million, like.
Yeah, this, this, this is, this is, this is the good, this guy, can you bring up the, uh, October monthly budget status report, page four? And the, the showing answer is, yes, we can wait, and then I'll go for my, my logic. Whenever we have three months of negative, I mean, my mouse, it automatically kicks us through binding conditions.
Hmm, yeah.
So, one, two, three, we should, we should have been there last year.
Hmm.
And, and yet, this number is actually down, up here, about eight hundred thousand dollars. And we were down, we, we should have been, again, here. We were down here. Nothing happens. Per se. We didn't have any time, or, that is going down. And I'm going to go back to my, my previous time here. Um, there, there, there was a time when, when, when we buy, uh, school buses. You keep them for a little bit of time, a certain number of years, and no longer than that, because the way that we're funded. For buses, it's through depreciation. Ordinarily, somebody would say, this bus, I can't remember how long this, I'm going to say thirteen years, but it's a number. A, a person may say, and I said, why are we getting rid of this bus? It could probably last us an extra year, ten years. As soon as the bus was fully. Appreciated, we stopped getting reverse support ads. So when I came here, there were a number of buses that were actually past the depreciation, and we ended up. Having a very, very low. And we found balance, month over month, in transportation. We worked hours upon hours upon hours. To make sure we never hit zero, because I was under the impression. That it's happened, so coming back here. Didn't happen. Didn't happen. This didn't happen. It's still below zero. This number is probably right about here with the eight hundred thousand, it's probably right at zero, excluding the eight hundred thousand. So I'm thinking, kicking it to December, my explanation is, is, is okay.
Yeah, there is, uh, it kind of like give you this, so we're gonna have, this time we're gonna have. Um, we have some new board members, and they need to hear this whole discussion, because. You know, we're going to be living with this issue for the, you know, at least the next school year, for sure, it's, and all that, so. That's the other reason, you know, I mean.
There, 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 there's a lot of reasons to do it in December.
Okay. So, um, there's no, I'd like to move that we table this resolution until, uh, until December.
So, sounds good, I think.
And we were saying we tabled this, uh, unfortunately, December, so we, they are higher. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, um, you wish to approve the human research assessment report?
So. Second.
And you decided to approve the human research assessment report? Any discussion? Any, any, I want to see, or say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I didn't hear him vote on the table motion, or this time.
Okay. Charlie, or.
Yes, I am both, I am both.
I am. Okay, so to you now, this, on our, okay. Uh, so that's been approved, um, so we're going to start final public comment period. If there's anybody online, who wants to provide a couple of comments, you can raise your hand, zoom, or you can. Uh, request in the chat to do some public comment, and. I mean, it's just a bit. The voting. We will move on to, uh. Let's see, uh.
Up there, I'm sorry.
And move and.
Second.
Say, and this will be adjourned, um, okay, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are, thank you very much.
Thank you.